Okay, welcome to the Village of Buchanan special meeting this evening of February 23rd, 2022. This meeting is to discuss the rezoning of Indian Point, but first, please join me in the pledge allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, so you're gonna see two of me here this evening. Rich had a hard time coming in, so I sent him my link to come on to the meeting. So you'll see two Teresas. But as we all know-
Luckily, he's wearing red, so we'll tell you guys apart.
Okay. Yeah, Rich, if you want to, you go to the right part of your screen on the right-hand side where it shows up your name. You can highlight it and you can change your name if you want to. It's up to you. Okay.
Change it to Huckleberry Finn.
So, okay, so the board has hired David Smith to help us in the process of rezoning Indian Point. And as we all know, Indian Point's approximately 240 acres. The southern part, which is next to the Sheetrock Plant, that's one section. The gas lines go through there. The middle section is where the decommissioning will be occurring. And then north of that is the 60 acres that we are definitely interested in, and we're in continued discussions with Hole Tech to have that property released earlier. There's also parcels across the street next to the cemetery and next to the transmission lines, the Con Edison Transmission Line. So there are other, you know, possibilities, other parcels, but they have been very receptive with the release of the 60 acres, and that could be as early as 2024. So as we all know, it's pretty important if that can be released in 2024 that we start the process. And we put in there what we would like to see, you know, not only the board members, but of course we'll get input from our residents. We're looking for the best and highest use, and this is all about planning for the future. And I've said this before, we have one time to get this right. The southern parcel, I just want to mention something. I did mention to the board. I'm on the Chamber of Commerce Business Council and the, I don't know how else to say it, the windmill people had approached them. And they were looking for support from the Chamber of Commerce. They had not talked to the property owner or the Village of Buchanan yet. Well, they did go to Hole Tech and Hole Tech expressed to them that they were not interested in releasing that property yet. So that property wouldn't be available. So that's not going to be an option at this point. So David Smith, I think I'm gonna turn this over to you. I think you have a presentation for us.
Yes.
Okay, and thank you for joining us this evening, because you know, we kind of need to know what is this process? What do we need to do? And and we'll go from there.
Okay. So I'll give you a little bit of background. I know we talked late last year. My name is Dave Smith, the record Dave Smith, I'm principal of Planning and Development Advisors. I'm a land use planner. I've been practicing for over 30 years. Most of my practice is within the lower Hudson Valley. I have a number of municipal clients. The principal one is the Village of Sleepy Hollow, and I've been working with them since 1997. And the majority of that time have been working with them on the redevelopment of their former General Motors Assembly Plant. I've also worked with other waterfront communities, including the city of Newburgh, the city of Yonkers, the city of Glencoe, and the village of Greenport. As part of my practice, I also work with a number of private developer clients, working on the redevelopment of the former United Hospital site in the Village of Portchester and have a a number of other projects spread throughout the county. So I think I have a fairly good understanding of of not only municipal planning, but also the private development sector and what helps drive both of those needs. And I think, Mayor, you, in your opening remarks, you mentioned the closing of Indian Point. I'm just gonna start my presentation. Very good. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So for tonight's meeting, I'd like, we started our introductions, go through a project review where we are at this point. Kind of, I want to get some initial input from the members of the board on kind of a vision, understanding that we'll go to the public at some point to get some additional input on kind of the vision statement. Looking at the study area, Mayor, you had mentioned some of the different component pieces of the area, the rezoning area. So we'll look at that. We'll look at the kind of the initial input on zoning review and the different components that go into that. And then we'll talk about kind of the process review and next steps. And I just would like to note that the process that the village is going through is not, it's not a simple one. This is a challenging site. You have a number of different issues that need to be reviewed. You have public input. You've got market considerations. And it'll require a fair bit of work on everybody's part to move this forward. So with that, I was told by a colleague that whenever you have a chance to start a presentation with a yogi bearer, quote, do it. So my favorite one is when you come to a fork in the road, take it. You, as the village, have come to a fork in the road and have a site that is looking to be redeveloped. It's owned currently M2, which allows for a number of industrial uses, the peaceful use of atomic energy, and some of those being phased out. And now the village wants to look at, all right, so what's the next step? So here's the important component of kind of the process of engaging the public, engaging the stakeholders and the decision makers. And just as an aside, kind of a funny aside, given that we just finished the Olympics, I saw this venue as part of the Olympics, and somebody had mistakenly said, oh, it's a ski event at a nuclear power plant. And I thought, oh, this may fit in right, you know, with what Buchanan is thinking about. And it turns out it's actually at a steel facility, but I think you kind of get the point that there, you know, someone was being very creative with the reuse of one of their sites.
So we should put in for the Olympics? Is that what you're saying, Dave?
Absolutely. I think, you know, maybe that's a, you know, some type of an event, certainly, that could, that could be accommodated. So we're starting with the project site, and we're talking about the M2 Zone, which, if you can see the laser pointer here, I'm just outlining those properties. And it includes approximately 365 some odd acres. You have essentially the, go to the next slide. You have essentially the energy properties, the Indian Point properties here located as Parcell One, Lafarge Gibson is number two. And then you'd have some of the Con Ed it properties across the street from Broadway. Broadway is located here. Lenzco Park. And then also, just so that we have this as part of our thinking, even though this property here is located outside of the study area, my understanding is that the village has recently received an application for development of that property for residential use. And I think that's an important, and I think you also may have some other interest from the development community. I think that's important just going forward, understanding that if the development community thinks that the Village of Buchanan is attractive for investment, I think that bodes well for kind of your long-term thinking about how you'd like to see the collective redevelopment of these properties developed. So, understanding that the properties here have been kind of outside of the public realm for a number of years, 60 some odd years, and that there is an opportunity for redevelopment. One of the things that's part of this process is to talk about a vision. What's the vision for what you would like to see? And it's not, it's not my vision. It's really, I don't live in the Village of Buchanan, so this really has to reflect what the elected officials and what the the populace, the people who live here, want to see happen to these properties. And as part of the discussions I've had with Marcus and with others over the last several months, a lot of this discussion has talked about some type of mixed use, residential, commercial, having access to the Hudson River for the public. And what I, if I can, you would indulge me, if I could have each of the elected representatives or anybody who's on this call right now as a participant, just maybe give me a 30-second, a minute highlight of your vision of these properties and how you'd like to see them redevelop. And that kind of would help inform kind of the processes we go forward and just provide some general input. Maybe, Mayor, I can start with you.
Okay, so for the 60 acres, if you could move your pointer over to closer to the water, closer, yeah, like in this area, this section, yeah, like up here, right along the water. Like up, like run it through here. I personally think, I think the best way to do this would probably be some type of dense development closer to the water area, whether that's like a mixed use, whether it's, I don't know, townhouses, apartments. And I know there's going to be pushback about, you know, residential, but that's a discussion we'll have. But we could also have perhaps a restaurant there. Or somebody had mentioned at one time, which I thought was interesting, but I don't know how well it would go over, like some type of a venue for for meetings and, you know, different things like that. So my thought, original thought is some type of a residential mixed use, maybe a restaurant, maybe a a marina, perhaps. I don't know what the water, the depth of the water is in that area, but that might be some type of a nice thing. Because what I'm looking to do, where you see number one, the number one is there, that's where the spent fuel casks are. So there, yeah, number one, right here.
Where his laser is.
Yeah. So, so what you want to do is, there might have to be some type of a buffer, but 60 acres is quite a bit, you know? So if we keep it further south in that area, very close to our park, and I know I'm longer than 30 seconds, but, you know, we had all talked as a board at one time about that. And then maybe we could, you know, discuss, have a discussion with the developer to rehab our park also while he's doing that, he or she or they are doing that. Because our parking lot there used to be a dump, so it's very uneven. It's settled. It's not in great shape. So there could be some upgrades that we could work with, with the developer on that. But so I'm looking almost to the furthest south point for any type of development, but I'm also looking for open space. So those are my thoughts. So the middle section, we all know, 12 to 15 years that, you know, I'm preferring on this whole site not to see any heavy industrial. When we go to the southern part, could be mixed use, but, you know, we have to focus on the highest and best use because we do need to replace our tax base. So I'm happy that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, when you say the southern part, what are you referring to?
I was, uh, no, not, yeah, I guess more, more the parcel one where the training center is and the gas lines come through.
When, so that, I think, I consider that wooded area, and I'm very much in agreement with you generally laid out. But that I consider to be the northern parcel. So when you say the southern part, I'm just trying to understand what you're referring to in your mind.
Southern part I'm referencing next to the Sheetrock Plant.
Okay, so that's that kind of jig-jack.
Yeah.
David has got his laser there now. David's a mind reader. He knew exactly where to go.
You would have to do, because you have an industrial piece there, you would have to have something that's transitional. You know, next to an industrial spot, what could you, could you do mixed use there? Could you do? I don't know. You know, that one I haven't thought out, but my mind's been kind of busy on the 60 acres north.
I, me too. Is it my turn?
It is now.
Me with the big mouth, who jumps right in?
Not you.
Is it possible, I don't know if you guys can see this. I can't see myself, so I don't know what you can see.
Oh.
Can we, is it possible to change the screen for a second?
Oh, you should have gave it to Marcus. This way we could have shared.
I did, I did, I did, but late today.
David, David, stop sharing your screen for a minute so that way Nick can show what he's talking about.
Okay, that's good. So, all right, so I don't know, can you see this? This is, yes, all that colorful stuff is the northern parcel. I've walked significant parts of this parcel. And if they don't come arrest me before I'm done, I'll continue. But the yellow portion along the river is roughly 100-foot wide stretch that I've drawn. And on this wooded parcel, I'm very much in agreement with what the mayor said. There has to be public access. And the most significant public access to me are the areas I marked in yellow, especially the coastal area. There's a natural terrain, natural bluffs and coves there that I don't think you're gonna find anywhere else along Hudson in Westchester. It's actually quite beautiful. Some way to set back in a little bit and put some kind of promenade with, you know, leaving people away, you know, whatever you have to leave to the cliffs, 20 feet, 50 feet, I don't know, and having some kind of natural shoreline with a, and then set it in a promenade, a walking promenade open to the public, I think would be one of the prettiest things we could imagine. And, and the, and the area over here ties into the tip, this is the rough outline of Lenzco Park. So we currently have a trail that follows the water and ends there, and that trail could probably be improved with the development. People would probably be able to drive into the promenade. For the people that like to walk, they could hike the Lenzco Trail and come to the end of the promenade. So that's my vision for that. The area where it says natural area here, it does include a very beautiful pond. I think, I don't know if that, Sean Murray has said that that pond is man-made. I have found it on maps going back before the nuclear plant. I mean, it's been there a long time. So if it's man-made, it's 100, it was made man-made 100 years ago or more. But it's a very beautiful pond and area. And so those are the areas that I think, I'd like to see at least 40% open space maintained, a minimum of 40% open space maintained. I'd like to see mixed use. I mean, I'm open to discussion, but, but I'd like to see mixed use in that other parcel. There's a lot of acceptable uses. I, I definitely would not want to see private homes. You make that two-acre lots and suddenly you have 30 private homes. And, and that's, that's all that gets to enjoy that property. So by having more dense development, be it apartment buildings or townhouses, the denser the residential, the more land you could devote to open space. You know, I think that I don't know, I can't even remember now. It's probably two years ago that I sent out, I made up a draft outline of what I'd like to see there. And I did email it, I re emailed it to everybody late this afternoon and requested, Marcus, if you could send forward that to David. That is not something, that's not a resolution that the board put together. Those are just my thoughts. So I'm speaking for myself here, although the board may agree or disagree with various parts. It's just kind of an outline to start the discussion, but that's something that mentioned some of the things that I think might be acceptable. Possibly a small, like Teresa said, a small theater venue. We had talked about possibly a conference center, you know, convention center, but I don't know if a convention center would, I don't know if that would work there, and if there'd be a demand for that. You know, it's a little tricky. But you know, the businesses should be compatible with residential restaurants.
So, Nick, if you don't mind, David, if you stop sharing your screen for a minute, I just want to, I want to focus, show the board something that I thought might be helpful, what he's showing, and then let me share something with you right now. Hold on a second. Everybody see my screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, so just again-
That's Yonkers, I mean, Tarrytown.
This is Tarrytown, so here-
That's a beautiful place.
So here you got a, you got a restaurant over here, you got a restaurant, you see my mouse to the right. You got a shared parking area, you got an open amphitheater for the public, you have a spray pool for the children, you have a playground, you have a pathway to go all along the water. So I just want to show you something that actually has been built and is working right now. They put tennis courts on the right-hand side, you can see it. So and the developer maintains everything and that everything's public access. So that's something that's already is working. So, Nick, I think this is, I think, Nick, this is what something you were talking about, correct?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. And I mean, now that's a flat parcel, so there'll be other restraints where we are. I know it is sloped, but it's, certainly developments have been done on more sloped parcels. It's not prohibitive.
Yeah, you see, if you see here, I know you can see there's a big slope difference here from the water to the open amphitheater, so you can see a slope. So just that we've given example, something else that is already is working, people can visit now.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's, you know, that's a good example. There's also, I got hold of this this booklet from, maybe there's copies available, Seenic Hudson puts this out, it's a revitalizing Hudson Riverfronts. And there's two or three illustrations of similar types of things like you just showed, Marcus, you know, theoretical ones, but, you know, blended development and public space. I could lend that to anybody. If anybody wants to borrow it, I could lend it. But I think I'm probably pretty close to my 30 seconds, so, but I'm gonna-
A little bit, Nick, you might have one more second.
I'm gonna stop short, though.
Thank you. We'd like to go next.
Oh, sorry. The other parcels below, I'm open to the industrial. And I sort of get into what's the best tax return when we get into those parcels that are already industrial. I'm open to discussion if people think we could do other mixed use, but, but right now I'm thinking that industrial is how we go down there. I'm done, sorry.
Anthony?
I'll go.
Okay.
So I'm on, I'm on board with, with the mixed use in the 60 acres, the northern parcel. I do like to make, I'd like to make sure that it is public accessible because, I mean, the waterfront area, a developer could, like you said, could make a marina. I, I don't want to make it that dense. I think we need to utilize the space and get as much as we can. But I do want to maintain public access. Especially along the river.
That's okay. Somebody's excited.
Yeah, especially along the, you know, the river. I think a marina there, I think a developer gonna get their hands on his property would be, would be, it's, you have a million things you could do there that would- I mean, you're all, we're all on the same page. I guess a mixed use there with restaurants and the convention center was nice, but, you know, I'd rather get, you know, bring more people in, develop it a little more. And as far as the southern parcel, I'm with you, Nick. I mean, the most money we can get out of industrial, if there's any other way to zone it or use, I don't really know much about it, but if there's any other way to zone it and use it, then I'm up, I'm all up, I like, I like to hear the ideas and, but whatever we get the best bang for our tax, you know, for our tax money. I mean, if it's industrial, then whatever industry brings us the most money. I mean, other than that, if we can chop it up, use, and rezona mixed use. Yeah. I mean, I don't really know much about it, so I can't, I can't really discuss that.
Yeah. Hey, Anthony, could we ask David, because I think that's a point of confusion for me. What do you get the most tax revenue at? We've gone back and forth on this a few times, and some people say residential, I've heard, you know, mixed uses probably might be the best way to go. David, is that something that you have any, that you could share any insight into, like, what types of things are going to yield the best tax, tax revenue?
Yeah, I think part of, part of what's important about this exercise is, is understanding, first of all, what, what does the community find acceptable? And if you find that, that mixed use residential and some commercial retail is acceptable, if some heavy commercial uses, we can certainly, you know, there's one of the things about mixed use is that first you have the, the residential component, and typically multifamily developments don't have a significant impact on the community. And they bring with it, you know, the tax revenue. But just as importantly, each of those households brings with it discretionary income. And each household is going to spend some portion of its discretionary income within kind of the greater Buchanan neighborhood. And there are ways of looking at, you know, kind of from a density standpoint, what those numbers may be. But it's, it's a significant spin-off of having a mixed use development that goes beyond just the tax revenue. Because all of those households help support local businesses within the local community. And I think that's part of and, and it also helps support kind of the retail component that's part of that overall content. So those are, and we can identify, and as part of the exercise here, there will be a number of uses that we can identify that may not be raised as part of this discussion tonight, but will be included as part of a presentation to the public, and we'll have a better evaluation of kind of the bigger bank for the buck as far as those, those types of uses.
Thank you. You know, I will just point out that a few things I've been involved with, we've done surveys to gauge what's important to people, public sentiment. Most recently, I was involved with the LW, with the Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan of jointly done between the Town of Cortland and the Village of Buchanan. And the survey that we did, the public sentiment is very, you know, there are people generally much more in favor of open space and less inclined to go industrial. Now, that's the survey of the people that paid attention to the LWRP. I don't know if that's a survey of everybody, but in general, when I, we did a survey regarding, you know, to gauge village sentiment some years back, generally walkability is surprisingly important to people, you know, access and walkability. River access, very big. So, you know, things that have to do with open, with public, open space, walkability and river access come up huge within this area.
Yeah, and I think that the Hudson River is obviously one of your greatest assets, and so you want to make that available to the public and, you know, you know, when was the last time that this piece of property was available to the public to go out to the Hudson River? Sixty years ago, you know?
Nice, yes, about 70 years ago. Yeah, so 65 years ago.
So it's several generations of, of residents who have not had an opportunity to access the river. So I think that's, that's probably your, your, your number one item as part of the zoning is, is to create or ensure that there is public access to the Hudson. I know it's part of the, the Riverfront Development Zone in the Village of Sleepy Hollow, that's a requirement. And they have some minimum standards that you need to have as part of any of the development. But I'm pretty sure that that's something that, that you all feel is important and will include that as part of some zoning language.
David, I have a question on, on the, the big parcel. You know, we were just talking about, you know, industrial. Have you ever worked with, you know, a big part of that land is, has a gas main underneath it? You know, it's the, have you ever worked with something like that and with zoning on?
Yeah, I'm glad you raised that because we have, Marcus and I have had an opportunity to meet with the, it's the Algonquin. Yeah, and, and later on in the presentation, we've identified where those gas mains are. And understanding that they are a potential impediment to development and that you have to work around that. But just because they're there doesn't mean you can't use the easement for, let's say pedestrian access or to make those types of connections. But we, I think there is an understanding that, and certainly as part of, we'll get to it later on in the presentation, where I've tried to identify, what we have here in front of you are the- Where I've tried to identify, we, what we have here in front of you are the, essentially the, the, uh, the parcel outlines. And what I've done later on in the presentation is going through some of the. Issues that may come up as far as the natural resources that you have to evaluate. And then some also the, the manmade, like the gas lines, like transmission, overhead transmission, transmission lines.
You know, you can actually see the gas line on your, on that view.
Yep.
If we can go, if you're bringing in a little larger, I'll point it out, I can show you.
Runs right through.
Oh, yeah, there it is. That's it. Sure, that's it.
Yeah, and then there's another one that runs up here. And again, we'll get to that as part of the presentation later on.
Yes.
Um, okay, but, but, let's, is there, Mayor, is there anybody else that we want to?
Uh, Rich Funchen.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, right, uh, well, like, it hasn't been mentioned, but a hotel would be possible, especially a. Near the river with river view that, that could also attract events like weddings and, uh. Other types of social occasions that, that, uh, that would be helpful. Uh, I, I'd, I'd like to see as far as, uh, as businesses hop, uh, more towards a high tech. Uh, I, and the residential, I would prefer low-density residential. Of course, I agree with the whole thing about the river access. I think that's very important and parkland. Uh, a couple of, uh, negative things I have. I don't want to see factories that are noise polluting. We already had the whole village of, of Verplank go against the, the windmill people. Which leads me to my biggest problem when we showed the, you showed the thing in Tarrytown. Uh, I don't know, I've been, I've been up here for forty-something years and I've traveled down nine. And Tarrytown has nothing but, nothing but congestion traffic-wise. And now they've added all of that particular area. And I can't but help think that most of those people who are living there have cars, one, two, maybe three cars. I don't know how that is reacting down there. However, I know that the traffic situation, I think, is very, very important. We can't even get New York State to move a sign for Indian Point right now. To, from before Welch's Avenue, after it, so people would get off at Louisa Street. Uh, my concern is that, uh, the, this, whatever develop, we, we go with. Uh, there has to be some traffic, uh, situation put into it. If your developer is going to come in, maybe they're going to have to widen the streets and put in two lanes instead of one lane. And they, they have to have their egress to and from to nine, eight, to the nine. The highway go into Louisa Street and not come back through Verplank. And come into the, the downtown village area or down here, but my place by King's Ferry Road. There already have an increased traffic completely. And I think that's going to be a big stumbling block to, uh, the development area be, uh, the residential versus residential. Uh, residential, I don't think you'd have as much traffic, but if you're going to have a heavy industry. Uh, you, we're going to have more damage to our roads. Uh, we already have, uh, right now, as it stands. Uh, we have truck drivers who have no concern about going through a main part of our village. I don't know whether it's their GPS that's leading them down Tate Avenue. Or down Henry Street or all these other streets in the village. But I have noticed there is a definite increase in heavy truck traffic in the last five or six years. So I think that has to be, uh, very carefully examined. And any developer is going to come in, has had, has, I know they have to do the study and everything, but, um. In this day and age of GPS, I, I'm concerned about studies and how, and, uh, you know, that, that proceed. So I have a, a real concern about that and I would, basically, I do not want to see. Industry-wise, any noise pollution in industries. And, and of course, regular pollution coming in with industries have my concerns. That's why I mentioned the high-tech and I emphasize like the hotel, I agree with the, uh, for the most part with, with the. Of what Teresa and Nick and Anthony have said for the most part. Uh, those are just my additions to the, to what I have to say. Thank you very much.
And I, I think with the development there, the, the positive thing is it's on the outskirts, really outskirts of the village. You know, so, uh, like, like Richard mentioned, you know, there's the Louisa Street access also. So David, I think we're going to turn it back to you.
Great, and that was, I really appreciate that, that input, that was very helpful. So we'll continue on through the presentation. And, uh, as I indicated, that we wanted to, as part of the planning process. You want to understand if there are limitations on, uh, what development limitations there may be. On the subject site. So I just, this is quickly using, uh, the Westchester County GIS to identify, are, are there any wetlands or hydro soils? I think for the most part, um, other than, um, you know, Nick had identified the, uh, the pond in the northern parcel. Uh, you could be, for the most part, these sites are fairly clear of, of wetlands. Did a quick evaluation of flood plains, uh, very little impact on flood plains, even though you're adjacent to, um. The, the Hudson River. Steep slopes, uh, again, I think, you know, it was mentioned that there, there, there are some. These are engineering issues or design issues that can be overcome. I don't think that there's, there's anything here that, uh, would really preclude. Uh, some, some substantial development opportunities. And then this next slide, uh, Anthony, you had mentioned, uh, the gas mains. And we, there's, there's available documentation. And, uh, so if you see here in the, in the red, these are the gas lines that run essentially through. Um, the, the M-two district. And so, understanding based on our conversations, we really can't have, can't have buildings placed over. Uh, gas mains, can't have structures, it's possible to have road crossings. Um, you really don't want to have roads going over, um, or along, uh, those, those, uh, those lines. Uh, and then the, we've tried outline, maybe a little bit difficult to see, but here are some of the overhead transmission lines. From here and here, and I'm assuming that based on the closing of, uh, Indian Point, that the transmission lines that connect to. The, uh, the kind of substation are going to be eliminated, there's no reason for them. But the balance of the, uh, transmission lines will remain in place, uh, as indicated. So, but those become some of the parameters that we look at when, uh. We're identifying some of the, uh, potential development sites. And I think you all have focused on, uh, even before this conversation, on, you know, what are some of the areas? And so I'm just going to quickly go through what, uh, what this office had prepared. So here, this is the, kind of that northern area that we refer to, it's approximately sixty-two acres. Um, you know, that, that certainly is, that, that is a very significant area. And just by comparison, uh, if you, if, and, and I'll do this as part of the, uh. Uh, the presentation to the public, because sometimes it's good to provide comparisons. And the, the western portion of the Sleepy Hollow, uh, General Motors site is approximately sixty-five acres or so, sixty-four, sixty-five acres. And that's almost what you have here. So this, it provides some comparison of what you could accommodate from a development standpoint on some of these parcels. So this is the, what I guess we'll call the, the northern parcel. Um, this is, I guess, the southern parcel. And it, and, uh, Anthony, as you, you recall, you, you mentioned about the pipeline, the pipeline runs up through here. And the overhead line is here, so we've kind of carved out this piece. Uh, and there may be some smaller development potential in here, but it's, it's very limited. And it's really focused on the balance of kind of southern parcel, which is approximately sixty-five acres. Again, very, I think a very substantial component. Um, and it's separated from the balance of the Indian Point facility. And it starts to present opportunities for you to think about, or, so which parcels. May come online first and, and we want to focus on. So that, that's, that's the, I guess we'll call it the southern parcel. Uh, here's the, kind of the balance of the, uh, the Indian Point site, uh, fifty-three acres. Again, this is a much longer term, uh, property that would be in play. This is at the location of that, um, the storage facility. I believe, uh, based on the discussions that we've had, that there are certain buffer requirements that are regulatory and required. So we've kind of just said for, for, uh, presentation purposes at this point. This, this area, the more, more or less, is not going to be considered for anything from a development standpoint. But the balance, uh, of the property, once it's demolished and, and cleaned up and cleared. Again, you've got about fifty-three acres, a good portion of which has, uh, frontage along, um, along the Hudson, very exciting opportunity. And, uh, this other piece, this is the, uh, the gypsum site. Um, and again, you know, approximately forty acres. And one of the considerations is if, if, as, as you're looking at, um, all these properties. And you're rezoning it and you rezone, this may end up being a, um, an existing non-conforming use. Rezone away from the industrial components, um, that are in the zoning at, at this point. And I think the, the last piece, substantial piece, uh, is this. Piece is on the east side of, uh, Broadway. Uh, this is a property, uh, it's owned by Con Ed, it's approximately eleven acres. Um, and as we discussed, I think as part of the opening remarks, we had, uh, I believe this is the site. For the benchmark, the benchmark came in and made a presentation, I think recently. Um, so again, if, if, if the development community is looking at, uh, Buchanan and, and kind of this neighborhood. I think that, that is a, a good sign for the village that you have, uh, opportunities here for, uh, once you've. Initiated the rezoning, that you'll get developer interest. And I think that's what you're looking for, you're looking to enhance your, your tax base. Uh, and the economic activity within, uh, within the village. So. And, and this discussion has been very help, helped set the framework, I think, for, um. The, the, the different components of, uh, the area that you're considering for rezoning. Now, the, um. The next step, uh, I'll just kind of quickly go through, um. The zoning review and some of the components, uh, that, uh, that ultimately will, will talk me about. And this will get some additional input from the public, but, you know, the purpose of the zoning. Uh, is essentially the, kind of, it, it, it includes, uh, the components of the vision statement. So what is the village looking to, to see here as part of, uh, the redevelopment, uh, of, of M-two zone? Um, and I think it certainly captures, um, you know, the ability of the public to access the, uh, the waterfront. Uh, the ability to create, um. Residential opportunities, mixed-use opportunities, economic opportunities, uh, that benefit the, the residents of, of Buchanan. And as we get into the, kind of the details of the zoning. I think part of, uh, the, the discussion that we've heard here is, all right, so there are, in zoning, there are permitted uses, permitted principal uses. Um, and then there are special permit uses which may need, um, that, that have certain criteria that need to be. Followed before they're approved. And the, those special permit uses may be, maybe a mixed use, maybe a hotel. Uh, it may be conference center, these are some of the uses that we've discussed. Um, permitted principal uses may be something as simple as the marinas, recreation areas. Those are things that are, that really don't need a whole lot of overview, uh, or, or, um. Review as part of the, the approval process. There are accessory uses. Those could be parking, they could be accessory use, they're typical to, um, other, um, commercial types of uses. Um, and then he, this part, the procedure for review and approval of special permit uses. And a lot of what I'm referring to, um, is from my experience in Sleepy Hollow, where they have, I think, which is a. A pretty successful process. So as part of that process, um, an applicant would come in, the zoning is already in place. And an applicant comes in and they say, all right, here's what I want to do. And they, they submit a conceptual plan. And it, it has kind of a general outline of the redevelopment of the site. It had, would have, uh, uh, configuration of roadways. It would have the different uses, it would have density, um. It would have setbacks, it may have height requirements. Um, and as part of that, that special permit review, that, with this conceptual plan. That's when the village would do, uh, kind of a very heavy environmental review under the state environmental quality review act. And I think, Richard, you had mentioned, um, the issue of traffic. So that's, that, that's the, at the point in time where developers come in with an actual application. Um, they have a conceptual plan that shows, here's what we'd like to do, here's the open space, here's the open areas. Here's the extent of the program that I would like to, uh, or this group would like to develop. And as a result of that, once, and, and that's, now you've got a known developer. Uh, who is appearing before, before they have, they're making a significant investment in the community. And that's when they would go through, that's when you go through and you would ask for all those specific traffic studies. And as a result of that, uh, evaluation, and they would look at things more than just traffic, they would look at. Traffic, they would look at water use, sewer, they would look at demographics, they would look at the impacts to, uh, the fiscal condition within the village. Um, so all of that is, uh, evaluated and, and that decision is before the village board. Typically, because you are the decision makers. And so you would issue the special permit for, and, and again, this is the kind of the, the framework that we're, we're, we're considering at this point. And so that the, the village board would consider kind of the overall framework of the building. And once that's approved, then now the, the development entity understands, all right, now I have some entitlement to the property. And then they would prepare the specific site plans, would they get into very detailed, um, description of. Uh, the proposed buildings, uh, the roadway configuration, crosswalks, landscaping, the architectural design. Uh, so that's, and, and that typically is approved by, uh, the planning board. So there's a little bit of a bifurcation of the, of the process here. And, and, um, I'm not as familiar with, uh, the, uh, with your planning board. But in, in Sleepy Hollow, that's the way it's been arranged, where there's kind of the conceptual plan. Is reviewed and approved by the village board and then the site-specific plan. Typically, the site-specific plan comes in in components, um, where you may not have, uh, a developer come in and say, all right, I want to develop. All sixty-five acres of one, let's say the southern property, but I'm going to come in and I'm going to develop five acres. So they would develop that in pieces and that gets reviewed in discreet, uh, discreet chunks. And there are design standards, um, that are typically included and will, will provide some draft, uh, design standards. That typically talk about setbacks and, um. That relates in, in some instances, you have, because you have the Hudson River there. And that don't necessarily want to have, uh, tall buildings near the waterfront, you want to have those further away from, uh, from the waterfront, just as a. As an example, and there may be other things with respect to setbacks from, uh, property lines. Uh, the type of, of architectural design treatment that you want to have or consider for, uh, for redevelopment. And I think you have, you have some overlay zones, as I recall, that have some design standards and. Uh, it, that's a similar concept to what we would, uh, consider here as part of, uh, kind of a general zoning description. So that provides kind of a, a, an overview of what you could expect in the way of actual zoning text. Um, and, and that's a pretty, uh, intensive effort, uh, that we'll get to later on in the process. So, um, speaking of process and next steps. And I think this is important because it's, this is, again, this is not a, a simple or easy, um, assignment. Uh, there is, uh, uh, an opportunity, and I, and I think with the, with the lifting of the. Uh, kind of the COVID mandates and, and, um, everything, I think there's an opportunity now in the near future. To actually have a real meeting where we actually get to sit face to face. And, and I find those meetings are much more, uh, productive. And so I think it's in the near future, uh, we'll be working with you to schedule. Uh, a meeting where we can have, uh, an actual public meeting where we can sit down and, and get, and go through kind of a presentation like this. And get, uh, more specific input from the public at large. Um, there'll be, uh, as I indicated, though, part of this process is actually drafting the zoning text. That's part of the, the charge from this office to develop the text that'll be reviewed by all of you, by Marcus and your staff. And at some point in time, the village will say, all right, now we're ready to, to go to the public hearings and to engage in the formal process. So as, as part of adopting the zoning, the, the amended zoning, there are formal referrals typically refer this to your planning board for review and comment. It would go to Westchester County as a general municipal review for their review and comment. Because you are involved in the, in an LWRP process, we're suggesting this goes to the New York State Department of State, because they have oversight over the LWRP. This zoning effort will, your comprehensive, your zoning needs to match your comprehensive plan. So if the comprehensive plan hasn't been updated, this would be part of the process. We would craft a section, a chapter, let's say specifically devoted to this rezoning. And that would be part of your comprehensive plan update. And you would have to have public hearings on both the zoning and amendments to your comprehensive plan. So, and you can conduct those concurrently to be as efficient with your time and expenses, expenses as possible. And in the event that the LWRP doesn't reflect the effort that you are currently undertaking, then the LWRP would need to be similarly updated to reflect what you were considering at this point. And then as part of this process, and, and this, and we're talking about the SEACER, that's the state environmental quality review act. Prior to adoption of the zoning, you need to go through this process. And it, but it's, it's not nearly the intensive process that you would have when a developer would come in with a specific proposal. Because right now, all you're doing is putting in place the zoning that would allow for future development to happen. So typically for these, this level of effort, you would prepare an environment, the long, what's called the long environmental assessment form. And we would supplement that with zoning text with all the public input that you have received as part of the process. Any available information from some of the interested stakeholders or governmental agencies, which may include New York State DEC, may include the state historic preservation office, the department of state. So all of that would be incorporated as part of your evaluation of public input. And and essentially at the end of the process, you would have a negative declaration, conclude SEACER and adopt your zoning in that place. So Madam Mayor and members of the board, that concludes the presentation at this point. You know, I think, you know, if you have any additional questions, you want to go over some of the additional, the slides that have been presented, be happy to do that. Any questions, we could kind of go through that as well. And I, I, I think that, that for me, this discussion's been very helpful and very productive to get kind of some of the initial input before we continue to move forward with the balance of assignment.
Amy, could you go back to the previous slide? So the, these are the things that you would, you would be doing, you would, you would be referring those formal referrals, you would do all that, that whole process. I, I think what's really big, big is the SEACER process. Cause you know, there were, there were things said that we shouldn't be, we're wasting money, we shouldn't be hiring somebody outside, we should be doing this ourselves. And you know, honestly, I do not have the background to do the SEACER process, the, the zoning referrals, going to Westchester County, you know, I don't, I don't know what the process is. And, and there's nobody on our board that would be able to do this, this whole process. So, you know, now that you've gone through this, I, I can better understand that, you know, there are certain things that are required to get this zoning done, and it's not just changing, saying we're changing the zone. You know, it's, it's a process.
No, it, it's, it, it is a process. And again, you know, drafting the zoning text itself is not just a cut and paste exercise. There has to be a lot of thought given into the process and it has to incorporate what the public, you, you as elected officials and also the public would like to see as part of the, the zoning regulations. So it's a, it's a, it, it's not an easy assignment by any means. And you know, it's going to require cooperation with all the players that are, that are here on, on this meeting to, to move this forward.
And then you had mentioned, you know, there's referrals that go to Westchester County, Department, Department of the State.
DEC will be involved.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
Army Corps, you may want to, you know, this is something where you may want to, you know, do a kind of a blanket referral because you're adjacent to the Hudson River. I believe that there is a deep water channel that runs along the site. You may want to include Army Corps to get their input as part of this process. And I mean, again, this is, as we go forward and we get additional input, there may be other stakeholders that are identified that need to be made aware of this process.
All right. And that's why it's important to hire professionals, so we're doing the right thing. Because I, I really feel strongly that once this property becomes available, we are just going to have a deluge of, of developers. So before this property comes available, we want to make sure that it's what the board envisions and what the, what our community, what our Buchanan residents envision for that property. So this way, twenty twenty-four comes along, well, yeah, that's my other question. How long is usually the process for this to, to work through this?
I, I, my, my, my guess would be that we would finish this process before the end of the year.
Okay. So we would be prepared, you know, to be in a better position for the future, for the future development of that property. All right, I, you know, I, you know, we could not as a board or, you know, we have a very, we have a very small staff. We don't have a planning department, we have a planning board, but we don't have a planning department. So it's important that we get some professional help to do this. And David, thank you for agreeing to be a part of this. And I, I think, I think it'll be an exciting project, I think it'll be very interesting too. And I'm sure our residents will come up with some great ideas.
I'm sure they will.
I'm sorry I was late, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I was, I was, had a, I had a little issue, I had to take care, sorry.
Okay.
There, there was a couple of things that I, I just wanted to say, not, not generally about the Lenz Cove area, but part of the zoning, I would like to see something to be able to include the storage and production of energy. I know back, last year, we had a company that came to the village that wanted to have a battery storage facility at the Lafarge plant. And the presentation was given to, to some elected officials, but not everybody. And one of the reasons that I think they might have backed away from is because it's currently not allowed in any parts of our zone, and M two would, would be a great place for it. So in any zoning text, we'd like to have, I would like to see the addition of other types of industrial and manufacturing uses. The parcel that I'm talking about right now is the M two and of the gypsum manufacturer, Jupiter Electric had came in and had requested or gave a presentation of a battery storage facility of two hundred and fifty megawatts and to, with the potential to expand to seven hundred and fifty megawatts. But that's currently not allowed by our zone. And they had given us a prospectus of how much tax revenue per each phase of the project would be. So they were also willing to negotiate a pilot agreement with us for the, the individual parts of their project. So we'd like, I'd like to see that in there. Also, there's a, parcels in the M two that could also be included in the production of energy. We also like to, I remember Nick a few months ago had talked about having the medical, what was it, the medical production or medical testing on Greentown Road. But our, our zoning in that zone was very restrictive also. So I would like to see some type of text amendment in this M two zone to allow for a greater industrial use. And, and to be as a permitted use, obviously not an as-of-right use, because although you're going to do the SEACER for the general zone, as I'm sure you're aware, I'm sure the rest of the board members are aware, each individual project would require a SEACER also. And when the, when the, when any project comes to the planning board, a SEACER is always done by our planning consultants. So a generalized SEACER is, is a, a fine idea, but for each phase of any, any project in front of the board has to have its own individual SEACER and draft environmental impact statement as well as a final FEIS too. So you know, there, there are different phases that would be required, even though you'd have a general one, you're going to have to have another one anyway.
All right. That's fine, because you know, let's remember, the middle section of the property is not going to be developed for many, many years. So by then, whoever's on the board, different boards, they'll have, they might have different opportunities that come along too. So you know what, this is the input from the public, you know, if people want to do industrial, which is not really the biggest thing you get for your tax dollar. I, I, it's sounding like you've had discussions with the battery storage people.
No, I just got, I, I, a friend of mine gave me a copy of the presentation that you received.
Yeah, I had just a brief discussion with them. And so you know, Sean, I have mentioned it before, that the Sheetrock Plant was supposed to come back with their interest in that, because originally it was going to be in their parking lot. And, and it's not zoned for that, and then I never, they never got back to me. So that's where that was left.
I know, you had that, you were presented that on, on last May. And I know in a couple of board meetings, I had requested some of that, the information that you had received also. Unfortunately, I didn't receive it, so I had to reach out to other people. And I was able to.
I was waiting once again for them to come back to me, because if the property owner was not further interested, I just, you know, like I said, I was waiting for them to come back to me before I presented it to the board, but thank you, yeah.
Given that the property owner isn't interested, we could still have in our zoning code in case some other.
If that's what the board wants to do, you know, if that's, you know, that's part of the discussions we'll have of, of, you know, what we think is the best and highest use for the properties. You know, so there's many discussions, there's many discussions to come along with, with all this. But this was just the, the first brush and, and learning the process and, you know, what's involved. And, you know, there's, there's a lot to it.
What we're saying? I have a, I have a comment or two and a question or two, Sean, Sean, were you done?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned the biotech company, it was actually a company that did genetic sequencing. Like, you know, if you go get your DNA tested, somebody has to sequence that blood sample. Very non-polluting, very high-tech. I think it would have been a great thing. So I'm glad you mentioned that, and I think it's in line with what Rich said earlier, that he'd like to see tech in that area, tech companies. I mean, that's, so I think that's something we should look at, how we, you know, tech companies like that, which are probably a good tax accessible businesses, tax ratable businesses, as opposed to tech companies that manufacture and pollute, you know. So obviously, we have to keep things compatible with the largely residential area that we live in. I have a couple of questions to David. One is, David, do you envision that this would be one new zone, or do you envision that it would be split into multiple zones?
I think you could address that as, as one, as one overall zone. I think part of what you would want to consider is, is you have an existing M two now. Does any of that remain? Or does all of it get rezoned to a different use?
Yeah, well, it could be called, it could still be called M two, even if we change what's allowed. And, you know, and the, change the use and bulk regulations, but it could still be.
Yeah. You have, you have an M two district that's there now, that has certain uses. And, and the question is, if you, if you want to have different uses, you should probably create a different type of zone that has the types of uses that you want to see. And if there's something that is a remnant, then it becomes a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Yeah.
And eventually, it may get phased out and it gets redeveloped as part of the uses that you're, you're actually looking to see as part of this new zone.
Yeah, well, I, and I asked, because first, I feel like that northern parcel is going to be distinctly different enough that it might merit, merit being, you know, a termed, you know, mixed-use zone, while the other stuff could be, fall into catch-all. New zone, I think that that northern parcel merits having, being its own zone. You know, because what we're, what we're talking about in general up there, and what we're talking about in the other parcels are so different that I feel like there's a split there.
Not necessarily, I mean, you're, you're talking about, you, you want to look at this, even though one parcel may be different than the other, you want to kind of look at this comprehensively, how they all tie in. Because at some point, if you develop that northern part, portion, and you have, you know, some waterfront open space, it's going to connect all the way down through. So there's some continuity in thinking about having, you know, one consistent zone and still allowing for different types of uses, different densities within the same overall framework.
Well, I had suggested Nick about the northern part, making that like a C three zone. So that you could have the mixed commercial residential public access, you know.
Discuss it, sure.
Yeah, C three, I mean, you can call it any number of things.
Because I, everybody wants the public access, they want some kind of a commerce, some kind of housing in there, some type of retail.
Right.
A lot of those suggestions that you had made would fit in that area. I don't think they would fit in the other areas, you know, because it's so industrial down there. You know, the Sheetrock, it's not going anywhere, the transformer yard's not going anywhere, the spent fuel's not going anywhere. The power line, Hudson aren't going anywhere. Gas lines.
Gas lines aren't going, yeah.
You know, so, so the, the northern part would be the freer part, where you could put in some house, where you could put in some, you know, retail sales, but as long as we balance the housing portion with the retail portion. So that you can offset the impact to the schools and impact to your, your funds, not maybe to your services you have to provide. So the northern sector would, I think would be ideal for a similar, a C three or even maybe a D two. Because if you do, and you know, C three would be everything in C two and C one. So it's just like a whole other class, because it's so unique. You know, and then the other portions, you could put in different as-of-right or permitted uses than a M two or, you know.
Or even. Yeah, I, that's kind of what, that's pretty much what I was thinking. If, if David can explain to us, you know, a way to do it where we could achieve the things we want, and yet it's all called, you know, called one, you know, if it's all one zone, but we could still achieve what we want, you know, then it's sort of like a rosebud, and the name is still Rose, as long as we can get what we want there. You know, so we, I guess we can discuss that further as we go on.
This is just the initial meeting, you know, just some initial thoughts.
Another question or two quickly, David, the, and your proposal to us. I know that any maps and plans and things are done by others, not by you. But if this, when the zoning, if the zoning map has to be, our village zoning map has to be revised, is that something that you would do?
If it's in a format that I, that I can access and revise it, yes, that should be a fairly straightforward.
Okay. And, and one last question. So with this process could take the rest of this calendar year. And in the interim, somebody might come and say, hey, I, I want to do this or that here or there, and you know, I mean, whole tech owns the property, so they can't. And you know, I mean, Houltec owns the property, so they can't just do this without going to Houltec. But if we do get expressions of interest before we're done with this process, how, what would you suggest, how do we deal with that? Somebody comes and says, I'd like to build a warehouse on that fifteen acres that surrounds the cemetery. I want to put a big Butler Building Warehouse or, or anything. I mean, how do we deal with people that express interest between now and the time we complete this process?
Well, I, I, first of all, you, you should be very, you know, counting your stars. You have somebody who's showing interest and, and wants to invest in Buchanan, I think that's a good thing. If you do have somebody that's willing to invest and, and go through the process, then you could carve out. That specific site that they're interested in and let them move forward with their own process. If they have their own development program that they want to submit to, to the village. And not necessarily hold it up or have it wrapped into, to this program. But I think if, if we're looking at getting a conclusion to this process by the end of the year. If you have a develop, if you have developer interest, they're going to say, you know what, I'm going to wait. And I'll participate as part of this process, but I won't come in with a formal submission until the process is finished.
Okay, yeah, I mean, because this is pretty much our template or our vision plan, you know, for the future. Hopefully, some of it is not too far in the future, but some of it will definitely be far in the future. So, okay, I, I, I get your, your answer makes sense, thank you.
Okay, but to, to tag on to that, if somebody does come in with a formal proposal. For as of right use for any portions of the M two zone. We, I don't believe we can arbitrarily deny him because we want to change the zone, it would be grandfathered in at the time of their submission, correct?
That's correct, they would have an opportunity to.
Yeah, they, they, we, we can't tell them no because we want to change something in the future. So I think Nick, if, if you're worried about this timeline, which it seems like everybody's worried about a compressed timeline of a few months from now. Or six months from now, if, if we don't even have a draft within another year. There is a, a real fear that if this parcel, parcel wants to get removed really quick. Or even anything, and it kind of, it's an order of Lafarge parcel, we can't stop them from doing that now unless we were to change the zone right now. Like I had suggested months ago, if there's a problem with the sense of immediacy of somebody coming in and doing exactly what I just postulated. We can make the entire M two zone right now C two within ninety days. And then we would still be under the same characteristics as what David said about the pre-existing non-conformance. Unless one of those structures, whether it's Lafarge, Con Ed or any place, has to be rebuilt greater than fifty percent by some disaster. Right, Mr.? If, if a pre-existing non-conformance is no good if you have to do more than a certain amount of repairs, correct?
Yeah.
You have to come up to the day's code. Well, I want Mr. Smith to tell me if, if I'm, if I'm right.
Yeah, I, I, it's an interesting concept, I, I guess what Sean, David, what Sean is saying is sort of like a, a temporary holding pattern. But we make it official, what do you think of that?
Well, if, if you're, one of the options that the community has, if you're feeling development pressure. Is you could institute a moratorium until the zoning process is finished. That's, that's one alternative that's available to you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And, and I'm not terribly worried about this because Houltec owns these properties and I don't see them releasing anything for at least a couple of years.
Yeah. Yeah, the property is just not available yet.
Well, Con Edison owns some of the property and like I said, Lafarge owns some of the property or Certain T. So we're talking about the entire M two district.
Well, I don't think Certain Teed is going anywhere anytime soon, they might change their name again, but I, you know, I don't see them going anywhere. This seems to be a very key place for them in the country for distribution and manufacturing.
Who is Certain Teed?
That's the Sheet Rock Plant.
Oh, the Sheet Rock.
Wallboard, whatever.
I can't keep track of who owns that plant. And I think it's the fifth owner since I've been here.
It changed the name again, who knows with them, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so.
Well, I was just wondering, what do the other board members think about allowing the battery storage facility? And adding that to the M two district zoning amendments that Mr. Smith will be creating?
You know, I think, I think the board needs to understand a better understanding of the battery storage facility. I know the town has been pushing it, I have gone, and I've said to the town, if you think it's such a great idea, then you have a hundred acres there, maybe you could put it there. So I personally, in that one zone there, am not exactly thrilled to see it there. If it were to come into the village, I think the more appropriate place, which would make a lot more sense. Would be next to the, the over, the transmission lines that Con Edison has off of Broadway. So they're not, you know, they're, it's the backup and it's right next to the, to the transmission lines. You know, that's my thought, because there's not much you're going to develop over on that other side of Broadway next to the transmission lines. That would be the most appropriate place, if that's something that the rest of the board and the village residents thought was appropriate. I'm understanding there are issues with the battery storage containers. There's some hazard issues, I'd like to have an expert, not the company. I'd like to have an expert come in and discuss that with the board and also if it's on the Ver Plank Fire Department side, bring them in. Or if it's on our Buchanan Fire Department side, so that if there is an issue with them, that we're able to take care of that issue. That, that's my only concern with that. So you know, you have to, you have to plan for the, you have to have a vision for the future here. So if you're going to have manufacturing, manufacturing, what's, what's the transition at that point? Like, are you going to use your whole waterfront at that point, other than the sixty acres as manufacturing? Which everyone else in the state along the Hudson River has gone away from? So what's the transition point, if you're going to do manufacturing, 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 ten years, twelve years, fifteen years from now? What, how do you transition from what's the decommissioning process? How do you transition that property or do you, or is the vision just to keep going manufacturing? That's my, that's my concern there, that's my big concern.
Well, they, you know, the village was always built on a, on a. On a commercial manufacturing tax base, it started with the Standard Oil, that was our. That, that was our, our big tax generator and that's what actually got us to secede from Batana Cortland for that tax base. Then as the years went on, we had more manufacturing, Indian Point and Lafarge. And that helped our tax base by making us forty to fifty percent industrial. So we, we still have to keep that a part of that component. You know, and, and the, the way the site is laid out all the way from Ver Plank. It's, it's a pretty difficult site when you want to try to get away from the type of industrial uses that are being there. Especially because it's, there's two things that are never going to leave there, it's the power lines. The gas lines and the gas lines come in right at the edge of Lafarge property and transect the entire property. And comes out, you know, just north of the Transformer Yard. So it's, it's a very, it's a, it's a very difficult to transition away. And try and put in housing and residential, the northern parcel, parcel would be ideal for that. And I think that's where we should be mo- most concerned about and increasing the uses in the M two for some of those other freed up properties. You know, because who's going to build a million dollar house in between Transformer Yard and a cemetery? Next to a gas pipeline underneath the overhead wires, so.
Let me clarify something, because you, I'm not saying all residential on that property, I'm not saying that, I'm not, please. Because that's what you're going to say, I'm not saying all residential on that whole property there. There are other uses, there are, you know, a mixed use, there are commercial uses. You know, we're looking to get the best and highest use on the property and for years, manufacturing hasn't been it. And, and like I said, you'll look up and down the Hudson River, we're, we're reinventing ourselves, so we need to think out of the box. We need to, you know, and you know what, we, we might argue over manufacturing versus mixed use versus commercial. But we might have a developer come in and say, you know, hey, you know what, I have this business, I'd like to be put, I don't know, I'm going to throw this out there. My corporate world headquarters there, I think that would be a great place for it on the Hudson River. So I, I, I don't want us to get bogged down in, in staying into the, the manufacturing.
Yeah, I think there's a lot to, to discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what, can I, I, I just want to say, I think, I'm not opposed to the battery storage, but I wouldn't say I'm for it just yet. Because I, I want to understand better what the tax ratability are and what any drawbacks are associated with it. Also, while we are not going to have, that's not going to be turned all into a residential. We got the power lines and there's going to be industrial uses for a long time to come. If you look at a map, like some portions, like let's say that fifteen acre parcel that wraps the cemetery. They do kind of butt up to the, some of the residential areas of Ver Plank. And you know, if there's a way to do the battery stuff where it's kept separate, so you know, you know, you don't want to. You, you want to have buffers between the residential and the industrial. So, so exactly where the, what the tax ratability of the battery stuff is, how safe it is. And how it's separated, you know, well separated from residential, even if we don't have a residential going into some of those areas. Around the power lines, there is a, a hope to extend the, to, to put a pedestrian path. That connects the Peak School waterfront trail that ends at Lenz Cove Park to, to connect that with a trail down to Ver Plank. One of the more popular things requested when we did the L W R P, a lot of people, you know, talked about. I mean, because you can't follow the river here, like a lot of the Empire State Trail. So you know, that Broadway becomes the bridge from Ver Plank to Lenz Cove for that. For that, for the Hudson River Trail, following the, you know, Peak School waterfront, going to Ver Plank, Cortland waterfront and so forth. You know, so it may not become residential, but there are some uses that where we have to consider people's movements, you know? So it's, it's a lot, there's a lot of, of location and specifics to look at. I, I, I would be, I would consider the battery stuff, but I'd need to learn a little more about it.
Sure.
But the, the best part about that, that pathway you're talking about, it could go right along the right way of the gas pipeline. Because the gas pipeline is what separates the industrial portion from the residential portion. So if you're looking back at the Transformer Yard and in back of where the G Ts were and where the Buchanan Ver Plank Rod and Gun Club was. That's exactly where the gas pipeline comes right now.
Yeah, and that's true here, because that's Con Ed property, whereas, uh, right now, the, the talk is to put the walk, a walk. Because Broadway is wide enough to put a walking lane from Buchanan, from Lenz Cove, from that area. Down Broadway into Ver Plank, you know, where the waterfront area is becoming quite popular.
And then we also have the paper road behind Village Hall, the old Village Hall behind the Highway Department that connects to Broadway.
Yeah, that would be a nice thing.
Which is our.
That would be a nice thing to free up.
So listen, thank you, everyone. We, I think we've covered quite a bit, we will schedule the next meeting. You know, this is just preliminary, everyone put their thoughts out there and I appreciate everyone's thoughts. So this is going to be an exciting process and, you know, looking for the future of Buchanan. We're, we're reinventing ourselves, so this is, this is just the beginning. All right, Marcus and David.
David, thank you very much.
So much, thank you, I think it was a good meeting, good overview. All right, thanks so much, all right, everyone.
Do you want to take a motion to adjourn and I can close the meeting?
Sure, absolutely, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Have a good night.
Hey, good night.